Hi, good morning and welcome to the March 18th, 2020 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. In light of this ever-evolving information spread about coronavirus or the novel coronavirus, please make sure that you're following along on Sedgwick County's social media channels, on our website. We're also partnering and sharing information with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment and the Centers for Disease and Control and Protection, or Prevention, excuse me. You'll note that a number of county meetings and events have been postponed, including Commissioner Howell's Town Hall that was scheduled for tomorrow evening, and we also have several county and district court functions that have been modified in light of protecting our employees and our public. We'll have an informational update from Director Byrne later in this meeting, but wanted to make sure that you were all aware of where to find information, up-to-date information about the novel coronavirus. On the agenda this morning, Commissioners, we have meeting minutes. You will receive an update, like I said earlier, from Director Byrne about COVID-19. You'll consider a resolution addressing a state of emergency regarding COVID-19. There's an Aetna Better Health and Kansas Partners in Community Donation to Calm Care. We also have donations from the United Way to Emergency Communications. And you'll consider a resolution to build or repair bridges in Sedgwick County using general obligation bonds. And then finally, we will have a report of the Board of Bids and Contracts. And so with that, Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you.
Thank you, Kate. Good morning to everybody, and welcome those who are watching on KPTS and YouTube Live. So we will call the meeting to order for Wednesday, March 18th, of the Sedgwick County Board of Commissions. Madam Clerk.
Invitation, to be led by Pastor Brent Orkington with First Men and Night Brethren, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Father, we're grateful for your protection, and in this world with coronavirus pandemic and lots of fear, we pray that we would take the reasonable precautions, restrictions. I pray that we would, as citizens, willingly and joyfully submit to the declarations of the county and whatever restrictions, because we want our country to be safe. At the same time, we pray for faith and that we would not be consumed by fear. So that's our prayer, Father. We also, of course, are grateful for these leaders who are helping to guide our county and keep us safe, and I pray that you would give them wisdom this morning as they lead. And we are ever grateful for this country and the freedoms you have given us, and we pray your blessing on America. In Jesus' name, amen.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item.
Public agenda.
We did have somebody sign up on the public agenda. Bill, can't read his last name. Is there a bill that wants to address us now, or is this something that you want to address during one of the agenda items? Okay. Bill F.A.N.G. Is he here? No? Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of February 19th, 2020.
Commissioners, you have a copy of minutes. If it's okay with you, we could combine A, B, and C, the minutes of February 19th, the minutes of February 21st, and the special meeting minutes of February 26th.
I knew that we approve items A, B, and C.
Second.
Been a motion and second to approve the minutes of items A, B, and C. Any discussion being done? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item D, resolution appointing Kenneth W. Nelson as trustee of the Sedgwick County Valley Center Township Board.
Mr. Papoon.
Mr. Chairman, like Papoon, County Counselor. As you're aware, any time there's a vacancy in a township elected office, it's the Board of County Commissioners that makes that replacement. In this case, Jet Truman was the Valley Center Township trustee, but he resigned on December 4th, 2019. Commissioner Cruz is recommending that he be replaced for the expiration of that term by Kenneth W. Nelson, and we have a resolution in place making that appointment, and it's in proper form, and asks that you approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Papoon. Commissioner Lacy, Cruz.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I did receive a call from Kenneth, had a nice little conversation about his willingness to serve in this position, and so I would make a motion, we adopt the resolution appointing Kenneth Nelson to the Valley Center Township Board.
Second.
There's been a motion and second. Any other comments or questions? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
I have not, is Kenneth in the audience today? Okay, like I said, I only had a conversation with him. Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Kelly, for being here for that. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
New Business. Item E, Sedgwick County Health Department Update on COVID-19.
Ms. Adrienne Byrne, welcome back to the Commission, and thanks for all you've been doing.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners of Board of Health. Adrienne Byrne, Health Director. There's been a few changes in the last seven days. Governor Kelly released an executive order that banned gatherings of 50 or more in the United States. We were glad to get that guidance, because with that came more specifics on what types of events and gatherings had exemptions. You can find that on the Kansas, the governor's website, as well as Sedgwick County website. Schools in Kansas, as of yesterday, are not returning to session for the rest of the year. They are looking at remote learning. That will be coming out, hopefully that guidance will be coming out by the end of the week. As of this morning, in the United States, we have almost approximately 6,500 cases in the United States and 113 deaths. These are primarily in Washington, California, New York, and Colorado. We have 16 confirmed COVID-19 cases in Kansas. There's still a fair amount of questions on why is all this happening? Why do we have these bans? What's the deal with the six feet and social distancing? Three weeks ago, the United States, three weeks ago today, United States had 14 cases. Last Wednesday, we had 938 cases. This morning, we have approximately 6,500 cases. So it is rapidly spreading, and what we are attempting to do in Kansas is called flattening the curve. If you look at what happened in China, the cases overwhelmed the system in a very short period of time, so they were putting up hospitals, they weren't able to treat the critically ill, they, just as we do, we already have critically ill in our hospitals with flu and other ailments. And so by putting these severe measures in, and the social distancing, we're hoping to flatten that curve. And that curve flattening doesn't mean that we don't end up with as many cases, but the hope is that we slow it down so our medical system has an opportunity to treat those that they need to treat versus not being prepared. So prevention is still the best thing that we can do, and the social distancing is to help keep away from those that are sick, and if someone sneezes or coughs, that you not be close to them. And most people do cover their cough or their sneeze, children, it can be a challenge with. But the biggest way that this is spread are when someone infected coughs or sneezes, it goes into the air and the droplets settle on surfaces. And then we touch that surface and put our hands to our face. So we've got to keep our hands away from our face. That is the biggest prevention, along with washing our hands with soap and water, doing it thoroughly underneath the nails, in between the fingers, staying home if we are ill. And we have a lot of people calling in wanting to be tested, and I, you know, ask, what would you do if this were October of 2019? Would you be feeling that strong need to go to the doctor or be tested? There's still a lot of other viruses in the community, and we still have the flu. It is rapidly on the decline, but we still do have the flu in our community. The testing criteria, since we do not have an identified case in Sedgwick County, do not have it identified as community spread, the criteria is still, do you have a recent travel history? Or have you come into contact with someone that was positive for COVID-19 and have symptoms of a cough and a fever? And then the more severe is difficulty breathing. So those are still the criteria that we're going to use for anyone calling that wants to know if there's someplace where they can be tested as far as sampling. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, Adrienne. Commissioner Cruz has a question.
So where would we, where would we tell people to call?
As of tomorrow, and the biggest strain and challenge in our community and across the United States is the lack of testing supplies. So that is, that is the biggest challenge. More are coming in, and we are at the Health Department uncovering every stone there is in the U.S. to find those samples, those sampling supplies. So at this time, as of tomorrow, we will have a call number set up for people to be triaged. And triage is when someone calls and they believe they're ill, and we will ask them those questions to see if they do need to go somewhere and be tested. And that number, as of tomorrow, again, because we don't have it, we don't have people on it, but it's being set up, is 660-7425.
Okay. I just want to personally thank you for all the work that you've done. I know that this is not easy, and we are fielding questions left and right, so I really appreciate what you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask you some of the questions I'm receiving, and I don't know how to answer the questions. I thought maybe I could give those to you, and you could publicly speak to them. First one is, I understand that there's a vaccination that has been, that started a trial. Can you please talk about how long before, you know, if there's success in that? I have, I've heard some people say it would be a year before we'd see a vaccination available to the public. Is that a reasonable schedule in terms of even, even if, I was, that's the most advantageous schedule would be about a year from now?
Yes.
Okay. So the idea there's a vaccination around the corner is probably not quite accurate.
In terms around the corner, it's going to be approximately 12 to 18 months.
Okay. That's, that's good. That's what I thought was the right information. In terms of summer temperatures being a factor in reducing the communication of this disease, is that something that is thought to be real, or is that not?
Some viruses are affected by seasons. COVID-19, now it hasn't been around long enough to really, there's still a lot that we don't know, but at this time, it doesn't seem to have seasonal variants, so no.
This will probably will continue, even though the temperatures outside are warming up, we'll still see this probably continue.
That is the belief at this time.
And I'm getting a lot of, a lot of concern about, are there, is there discussion going on about further reductions in gathering size numbers? Right now, it's at 50. Is there discussions about changing that to something smaller?
There aren't current discussions going on about this at this time. Now, if it becomes community spread widely, when you look at other states around the country, you'll see some pretty drastic reductions and curfews and whatnot to try to limit, to try to further the social distancing with limiting how much contact people have. But at this time, no, it is 50.
Okay. And then I guess my final question would be, I, my perception is, I think a lot of, a lot of businesses, obviously government is desirable to be in total compliance as much as we possibly can be, in every way we possibly can be. I mean, there's, there's challenges like at the jail, for example, I don't know how you handle some of these things there, but, and I think that businesses have done a very good job. But in terms of people's personal choices, I think even they have actually done quite a lot of really good things to try to comply with the intent of these things. But in terms of law enforcement doing type, some type of forced compliance with this thing, has that happened anywhere, or do we anticipate that type of thing happening here?
The, the hope is that people will make good choices for the community, for the health of the community, and to protect those most vulnerable, so that law enforcement don't have to use resources to be enforcing the ban.
Yeah. I would just say, I'm impressed with basically decisions of people everywhere that are, that are making choices to, to do what they can to, to help flatten the curve, I guess. And so I think that's the, the right strategy, so I appreciate those answers, and I think that'd help a lot for people. I'm getting those same questions a lot, so I appreciate those answers from you today. Appreciate your presentation, and I would also make a motion to receive and file.
And we do have a COVID-19 email now that people can send questions to, and they can still go to 211 Night Away and ask questions, but we also have been receiving a lot through various emails at the Health Department, and so have set up a COVID-19 email that if it's not on our website now, it will, it will be today.
Do you know the email address off the top of your head?
I don't.
Okay, that's fine. We'll, we'll get that on the website, I'm sure. Again, I thank you for your, for your presentation. I'm going to make a motion to receive and file.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Counties are the front line of anything that's happening in this arena right now. We have about 3,000 counties across the United States, and we're members of the National Association of Counties. So things that are happening across the United States, some counties are ahead of us, because they've had this problem longer than we have and more severe. Yesterday afternoon, NACO held a conference call, and any of the counties that are members of NACO could participate in it. And at that time, Commissioner, Chairman Meitzner, Mr. Stoltz, Mr. Papoon, and Lindsey Poguozzo participated in it. And we just got to hear what is happening in other counties across the United States. And counties in Washington State, New York State are having severe problems, and we really need to learn what's happened with them and how that we can use the lessons that we learned to make sure that we can take care of our folks here in Sedgwick County. I want to give you kind of a brief recap of what I had, that I picked up in my notes yesterday. If Commissioner Meitzner, or Tom, or, or Mike, or Lindsey have anything that I missed, it's important, please don't hesitate. But first of all, they talked about some of the aid that is coming to, to the counties. There's already been one package that has been passed by both the House and the Senate. It was eight and a half billion dollars. Of that, about 950 million of that will go to state and local public health organizations. We need to work with the state public health agency in order to make sure that we get our share of that. We're the largest county in, in the state of Kansas, so I don't know how much that eight and a half, that 950 million will come to Kansas, but I'm hoping that we can get a good chunk of it here. A hundred million of that goes to human, community health centers directly, and that's to help the community health centers prepare. The rest of the money is for testing and research and development for the future, to see what, what we need to do in the future. That's the first bill, and again, that was 800, 8.5 billion dollars. They're working on a bill right now that's been passed by the House, it is at the Senate. The Senate has promised they're going to work it as soon as possible and get it to the President. That one is H.R. 6201. If you look it up online, make sure that you look for the right one. They passed one called H.R. 6201, but now there is an amended technical version of it that they also passed, so make sure if you look for it and you want any information out of it, it's H.R. 6201 amended technical. And as I said, it's been forwarded to the state, or to the Senate, so that it can move forward. What does that do? It's going to provide testing, nutrition, unemployment, some Medicaid help, medical leave. They're looking at Social Security tax and Medicare tax credits for employers. They want to make sure that unemployment is there for the public workers. A third bill that's working through right now also, at the same time, is even larger. That bill is $1 trillion, and I think we've heard some talk from, from President Trump last night on, on what all that carries, but I haven't seen the bill, they hadn't seen it in its entirety on what's going to be in that bill, but again, it's, it's a stimulus package mainly to, to stimulate our economy. Couple other points, we need to make sure that we work with Kansas Association of Counties, because they're all, all the counties in Sedgwick County, or in the state are involved in this, also with the state public health folks. There's also some FEMA money that's available, and we need to make sure that we take a look at what we can get there. There's $42 billion already available through FEMA. And what that can do is if we need to apply for that FEMA money, there is a Form 90-49. You can go on FEMA.org and find out what kind of public assistance that's available through FEMA. The other thing they've recommended is to watch cybersecurity, because there are a lot of people out there that are trying to make money off of this thing, and we need to make sure that they're not doing something that's going to impact the health of our They are putting lessons learned on, on the NACO website, and this afternoon at noon, there's another conference call that's going to be held, but this is with the White House, so at noon I will, will get some additional information. Then they put on, from folks from New York State and from Washington State that's actually gone through this. And so they, they transferred it from really just NACO at large to NACO specific to see what, what the states have been facing. In New York, they briefed that 20% of the people in New York that got COVID-19 required Said that employees, especially public or health, public employees may need some mental health issues, so we need to make sure that, that that's involved. And we got thrown in the audience, and we appreciate that. We need to pay attention, not only to the, all of the employees that we've got, but our public employees, we're for Sedgwick County and working with the public sector. We need to make sure that we're supporting them so that they can do their jobs, because they're on the front lines of this thing. Washington State, they, they got it first, and they were probably the initial brunt of it. The county that was talking is a much larger county than Sedgwick County, but they asked what it cost the county so far, and they said $80 million. That's what it cost the county. So as we're making decisions going forward here in Sedgwick County, we're going to have to, to make sure that we're making wise budget decisions, and some things that are in our budget for 2020, we may have to take a look at whether or not that we're going to be funding them currently, or push them back to the end of, of the year and see where we're at financially in this, because I don't see that it's going to cost us anywhere near that, that large county in Washington State, but it, I think it is going to cost our county a lot of money, and we need to be prepared to be able to fund that. One other piece of information, and I appreciate that you said that we're going to have a place where the people can go on and ask questions. One of the other recommendations is that, one of them prepared a Google document for people to be able to come into and ask questions, and also where we can post answers so that people aren't having to ask the same questions, so they can go on and they can actually find out what other people have asked, so that they can keep, we can keep current on the information. So that's a brief summary. I don't know if Commissioner, Chief, Chairman Meitzner has anything further that he'd like to add, or Tom, or Mike, or Lindsey. Thank you.
It was, it's pretty good. Plus, one, one thing, the federal assistance also includes keeping track of all the financial related impacts of, and I'm glad Lindsey was there, and they've, Lindsey's in our finance department, is doing a great job. They've got it set up to, to do that, to keep track for whatever the financial impact will end up being. But you did a nice job of summarizing, and thank you. I have just a couple of thoughts. Adrienne, again, thanks for your comment. We've had some, all of the Commissioners are working hard in their own way to, to help respond to community business individuals. It's important that we have the same information, new, new territory. One suggestion they had from, from a Commissioner is that, is that we take a more, because it changes so fast, I'd like to, to suggest that we consider like a daily briefing of some kind. Maybe the manager can maybe figure that out, what might be convenient time, and just update our current county, because it seems like the feds are doing great federal information. I'm not sure if we have state impact of changes, and maybe it's, maybe there's no changes, but I think the, the media and the citizens really are asking for daily update, and that actually would help us as Commissioners to have current and accurate information. I think for the public, I don't know, Tom, I don't want to put you on the spot, but also we are discussing, you know, obviously you mentioned test kits and, and looking at evaluation of remote testing sites or mobile testing sites, maybe temporary shelters, all kinds of things like that, and we don't have finite answers on those. I talked to Susie Santo, who heads up Visit Wichita daily now, and because she's in constant contact with the, Visit Wichita's in constant contact with the hotel and the restaurant industry, which is obviously gathering places, and, and they are needing information so well. Even this morning, if we can help work with her to, she wants to send out a broadcast from her to restaurants and hotels, or what, what's acceptable or not, the 50 people or not, and all the things that go along with that. So with the public, if we could work towards a daily until this thing settles down a little better. Tom, would you like to comment on anything else we're kind of trying to work on?
No, there's a lot of moving pieces, Chairman, as, as you well know. I think a daily briefing is workable. All of Visit with staff will work out the technicalities of how we do that, and it's a similar briefing style that the police department does over at the city every day, and maybe we could even co-join and do something there on a daily basis. But let me do some investigation.
That might be a good idea, because the media is usually at the, you're usually at the police briefings every day, and sometimes, how long do those go? 15, 20 minutes? Half hour? Maybe we could piggyback on that. That's a good, good idea, thought. Anyway, so thank you. If there's any other comments, this is a...
Yeah, a second to receive and file.
Okay. Thank you. It's been motion and seconded. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you.
If it's, the Commissions will, I would like to suggest an off-agenda item right now in, in front of the next item. It's related to some legal information, but...
It's a resolution dealing with the coronavirus.
It's a resolution.
Asked at the county.
At the county.
Allow this off-agenda item.
Okay.
To allow an off-agenda item.
Second. Been a motion and second for an off-agenda item? No comment? Being no comment, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Mr. Papoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here, there is being dispersed right now a draft resolution of, that was prepared by Karen Powell in our office. I think she did a really nice job with this. This is a resolution that would continue the declaration of local emergency that was declared by our chairman this past Monday. Some of the key points of the resolution and why we are asking for this declaration at this time by the Board of County Commissioners is that on March 12th of this, of this month, the governor of the state of Kansas proclaimed a state of disaster emergency for the state, all 105 counties in the state. On March 13th, we had a patient in the, in our medical facility that actually tested positive. On March 13th, President of the United States declared a COVID-19 national emergency. And then, as I mentioned earlier, on Monday of this week, March 16th... And then, as I mentioned earlier, on Monday of this week, March 16th, the chairman declared a state of emergency. And that would only be effective for seven days unless ratified and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. And that is what this resolution does and why it's before you today. This resolution is consistent with what the chairman signed on Monday. It will enable us to use some of the disaster plans that we now have available. And will also allow our purchasing director, Joe Thomas, some, some help in declaring emergencies for purchases that would be consistent with Charter 68. Rusty Leeds, the Assistant County Manager for Public Safety, is here and can explain some of the efficacy for doing this, if the commission wants to hear that. But we are asking the Board of County Commissioners pursuant to this resolution to declare a local disaster emergency pursuant to the Kansas Emergency Management Act. And for that, I'll stand for questions, or Rusty can get up and explain further what the benefits of this will be.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. I think it's pretty clear, if there's any questions, we can have Rusty address. Rusty's learning things by the day and the hour as well as the rest of us. I do see Commissioner Dennis.
Oh, as you mentioned, one of the things that NACO said is document, document, document. And we need to make sure that we have the procedures in place for us to be able to claim any kind of funding that we can get out of the state and federal government. And this is the mechanism that we can do that. So I recommend, or I move that we approve the extension of the emergency declaration.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, resolution delegating certain authority to the county manager and addressing a state of emergency regarding health matters relating to the COVID-19 outbreak.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stills with the county manager's office. I appreciate Commissioner Dennis's comment on the last declaration. We have been through this a number of times in Sedgwick County, declarations of emergency. And it does, the main purpose is to free up the county's ability to receive monies back from state or federal governments as we go through whatever the event is that we are having. This event is a little bit unprecedented in comparison to an F5 tornado or a flood or other kinds of matters that we are used to dealing with in the state of Kansas. This is something a little bit unusual. And following with that is a resolution in front of you now, which grants the manager's office a little bit of authority to be fluid and flexible and nimble as we work through this event. We have a number of human resource, finance, and managers' policies, all of which the people control through your governing. There are times in this situation where we have to make decisions in the middle of the night, where we can't convene maybe an open board meeting, and we need the ability to do that, and this, what this resolution attempts to do. I'll give you two tangible examples of what this could be used for. We have a number of grant employees in Sedgwick County to where under, depending on how the situation plays out, we may have to reassign to other duties. The grant does not allow payment for those employees to do that. We may have to authorize, for example, a transfer of some general funds to compensate employees who are grant, so that they can do a specific job for, say, the health department or for the fire department or for EMS. We could have the ability to do that with this resolution. It also gives some authority to make emergency hires. Depending on how this plays out, it may be a situation where we need to hire another epidemiologist or two to keep up with demand. And we're not there today, but it gives the ability for the manager's office to make those emergency hires. I'm not going to read the whole resolution to you, but I want to bring you to point number two, which is actually on the second page of this, of this resolution. And I want to read that. It says, "When the county manager exercises authority pursuant to this resolution, he shall communicate any such action to the county commissioners contemporaneously with or prior to taking such action." So we will never cut the people out of this process. People will always know through you what we are doing. I will, you'll get used to, if you're not already, emails from me in the middle of the night, perhaps text messages from me in the middle of the night. That's just the course of business for the next several weeks. So with that, I ask for your, I take any questions, and I ask for your approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the bench? There is none, but it is a new business. I guess anybody from the public would like to speak to this item? And being none, bring it back to the bench and entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been motion to approve. I don't see any comments. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, overview of the 2020 census.
Overview of the census. Um, Jason Dean. Is anybody from here? Well, then we need to maybe postpone.
Apparently, they were not able to come today, sir. We'll have to go to the next agenda item.
Okay. So we'll move that to, we can move that to next week.
Move to defer item golf.
Second.
Been a motion and second to move item golf to next week. I'd like to play golf one day. I'm sorry. Motion and a second to move item G to defer to next week. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, acknowledgement of Aetna Better Health of Kansas Partners and Community Donation to Calm Care.
Good morning, Ms. Joan. How's your world today?
As busy as yours. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Joan Tammany with Calm Care. I'm here today to acknowledge or ask you to acknowledge and receive a grant or a donation we received from Aetna. It's one of the Medicaid managed care entities we work with. They have provided us a grant donation of $3,000. They issued this to the community mental health centers that were engaged in the school mental health programs and authorized us to use that funding in any way we saw most appropriate. So we chose to use the funds in the following way. We purchased bus passes to assist families who had difficulty getting to appointments. We purchased school supplies for our school-based offices. We purchased curriculum to work with youth, providing the staff the resources to work with anxious children, foster coping skills, help development mindfulness, and other therapeutic techniques specific to kids. And we also purchased several therapeutic games to use with children who have difficulty sharing their emotions. So it provides for a playful way of interacting with youth who are not traditionally comfortable talking about how they're feeling. So these are wonderful resources for our staff, and more importantly, it is in working with children. I just want to say that I'm really proud of the staff that deliver these services in our community on a daily basis, and the donations that they provided are really appreciated. I do want to take the opportunity while I'm up here, just to acknowledge the obvious that we're in, really chaotic and unprecedented time in our lives. A lot of community members are struggling with anxiety and fear of the unknown. We know it's important for parents and others to talk with youth and children about what they're experiencing and to provide them with reassurance. It is, it is a scary time. It's an anxious time. There's lots of worry, but we will get through it. So we want parents and others to be alert to questions childrens may have, and for everybody to remember that Calm Care will continue delivering services to youth, adults, and persons in crisis. I do want to emphasize that we are evaluating how we deliver those services, and we will be moving some of our more traditional services to virtual visits and telephonic monitoring and services with patients. But this, during this time of uncertainty, our crisis center doors will remain open for easy access. We will be screening people based on the questions that are recommended by the CDC to make sure that if somebody has a temperature or other things, that we get them to the correct medical resources before bringing them into the facilities and jeopardizing the health of others and our employees. It's a new day. We want to make services accessible. We know that mental health issues and substance use will probably rise, as it does in most instances when there's a crisis in our, in our world and in our community. We will work with our communications team as we make alternate service options available to the community. We want people to stay home if they're not feeling well. This is for the safety of the people who need our services, but also for the safety of the staff that are going to continue to work frontline with our population. I just want to say that Calm Care has an abundance of caring staff, and we will remain ready to assist our community in the capacity that we do. So just a reminder that our community crisis center is a 24/7 facility. They can come in or they can call 660-7500 if they have a psychiatric or substance use crisis. And so I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to that today. But I'm here to ask you to acknowledge the donation from Aetna and to authorize the chairman to sign a letter of acceptance and appreciation.
Okay. Thank you, Joan, for the presentation and the gift. There's a question from Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. I don't have any questions about this, so I'll move to approve this. But I do have a quick question. Right now, with all the schools being out, and I know we have folks from Calm Care in a lot of our schools, and the people that you were taking care of, the students in those schools are still going to need some assistance. I hope that as this crisis moves forward, that we figure out some way that we can continue to provide those services to those students, even though we don't have school.
We already are. We're just doing it in different ways. We're connecting with them to see what works with the family. We'll continue to deliver all those services, just in, it won't be in the school facilities.
Very good. Thank you. And I seconded the motion.
I'm sorry?
I didn't second it. I made the motion.
You made the motion. Thank you, Joan. That was a great question, and thank you for providing that information. A lot of pieces moving.
Yes.
I'll second the motion. It is a new business. Is there any comments, and anybody from the public would like to address this issue? Being none, bring it back to the bench. And may no further comment. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item I, acceptance of donation from United Way to Emergency Communications.
Hello, Mrs. Laura. How's your world going lately?
It's spinning, so that's good. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Laura Forshee, I'm the Director of Emergency Communications or 911. We were in a community meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I was talking through some of the logistical plans that we had in place for dispatch. And part of what we are looking at is protecting our staff and trying to ensure their health and safety as we're moving through this changing environment that we're working in. If you guys can recall from when you guys have toured our communications center, we have a shared workspace. Everybody comes in and they have their positions. They sit in for dispatcher call-taking. But one of the things that we wanted to do to help protect them was to give them their own keyboards and mice, so that they're not having to share those touched surfaces whenever possible. So we're looking ahead at knowing that this illness is going to move through our staff and making sure staff is available to answer emergency calls and serve our citizens and community and field responders. So we wanted to get ahead of that. As we were in this meeting, and I expressed this need, thankfully, Mark Stumpf from the United Way was there, and he approached me afterwards and said, you know what? We have some equipment that we can donate to you guys, and we'd be very happy to do that, so you don't have to bear that cost to do so. So that is why I'm before you today, because Mark Stumpf, the Director of Direct Services from United Way stepped up to the plate. They have donated 105 keyboards and 105 mice, so that every staff member from 911 has their own keyboard and mouse that they bring in at the beginning of their shift. They plug in and they start their day with a cootie-free workspace as much as possible. And we'll continue this even past this Corona COVID-19 situation, because I think it's important to continue these good practices always. So at this point, and that donation is around $2,275 that this saved us from our vegetarian expenditures, and so we're thankful for that because we have it to spend otherwise. I do have Mark Stumpf from the United Way here. If you have any questions for him or anything that you would like to address with him, but at this time, I would stand for questions and ask that you acknowledge the donation and authorize the chairman to sign a letter of appreciation.
Thank you, Laura, for your comments and the proposal. Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for being here today. Couple of questions is what about headsets?
They've always had their own headset. Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And then outside of this question, thank you, Mark, for that donation. I have also received another question as far as school kids that are going to be out and not have technology. I figure there is going to be, obviously, school buildings are closing, but school will continue somehow. I'm going to figure out how to teach my kids math the current way. I don't even know. They're going to be doing, they're going to be doing math the old way with Lacy. But outside of that, what about the kids who don't have technology? And so do we, as a county, have computers? Do we, as a community, have computers that we could, we could provide?
Well, excuse me. We're in the process. We've made some contacts to some global partners that we, as United Way, have to try to see what opportunities are available for us. We've had a few requests. Right yesterday, they were from nursing home care, home facilities, long-term care facilities, because of the social isolation they were doing with their folks. What could we do to help? And so we're looking into available resources, even if it's an iPad, something that simple to be able to make that available to folks. So we have been working on that, choosing partners, finding partners globally that can help us address those needs as much as possible. It's all changing so quickly. Fortunate, fortunate timing that we were both in the same meeting talking about that. But it's one of the resources that we are looking for.
Okay. Thank you. You know, I guess in that same breath, like what, what do students do who don't have internet access? That, I mean, there's just so much to consider. I don't want to bring it up all right now, but I mean, these are just things as our community, you know, when we are working together to find solutions to help those less fortunate. So I appreciate you stepping up to the plate, and thank you for your continued service.
Mark, thank you as well for you stepping up. That's fantastic. Maybe you and Laura can address, so the, how are we intertwined with the, with the virus stuff with your 211 number? And is that, are you guys kind of married on that?
We have been, we have been partnered with 911 through, through the county, through 911s across the state of Kansas, through our 211. We're, we have a memo of understanding with the Kansas Division of Emergency Management that we can help any county, any entity with that emergency communication. Disasters that have occurred over the past 13, 14 years that 211 exists, our goal is to, is to work with Laura's team and take away those non-emergency calls so that 911 is free to be able to handle those calls. We can handle the other requests for donation, requests for cleanup assistance and those kinds of things from events. So we have been partnered with, with 911 for a very, very long time and want to continue that relationship. So this is just a new twist in what's going on. We've been working with Sedgwick County Public Health and KDHE now for over three and a half weeks with information referral through the COVID-19 crisis. And as it continues to evolve, we'll continue to support the state and Sedgwick County as much as we can.
Well, the irony of when we've had our mental health coalition going on for now a few months, and I think having 211 being part of that is really good. No idea that we'd have this last three or four weeks event that would now stress the...
And today's, yeah, today's disaster with the COVID doesn't stop people from having other needs. And so those crises can still continue for folks. So we're there still operational 24/7 for those two.
Okay. All right. You have a question for, or comment from Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have just one small question and a couple of comments, but Laura, you stated a number that's not the same number as in our backup material. I want to just verify, is it 2,275 or the number that's in our backup material?
The original number that was provided when he, we had 90 pieces of equipment, 90 keyboards and 90 mice that were provided. Mark thankfully provided us an additional 15 to make sure that we had a couple of spares on hand should we need them.
So just so we all understand, the information we have in front of us needs to be the number you stated, which is 2,275.
Yes. And the letter that the chairman has has been updated with that appropriate number. I apologize for the discrepancy.
Very, very good. Well, this is a comment. I want to say anything we can do to keep our 911 staff healthy and, and in their place, their, in their positions, providing emergency service communications for Sedgwick County, that is incredibly important. So... So, these are the type of things we don't think about most of the time, but someone needs to think about it. So, I want to say thank you for being thoughtful, and thank you, Mark, for being gracious, and your organization for being gracious to the county. It's wonderful to see people solving problems like this, and so, thank you for all you're doing, and appreciate your service to the community in so many ways we can't even begin to understand, I'm sure. So, I would, I would love to make a motion this morning to acknowledge the donation and authorize the chairman to sign a letter of appreciation.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item J, A Resolution.
I'm sorry?
I just wanted to say, last week, Commissioner Howell and I had the opportunity to go and see Mark in the give facility that the United Way has, and it was mind-blowing what you do. Just your impact in the community is hard to quantify, but that was a great opportunity, and I hope all the, I know you're working to get all the other elected officials there, but thank you for what you do there, because I know you touch truly tens of thousands of people through that organization. So, that's also something else that Commissioner Howell and I were just able to participate in last week, and it was great. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mark, have a good day, and tell your son I said aye.
Okay.
All right. Next item, please.
Item J, A Resolution Declaring It Necessary to Build or Repair Existing Bridges in the County Under Authority of KSA 68-1103 and Providing for the Issuance of General Obligation Bonds to Pay the Cost thereof.
Good morning, Lindsey.
Good morning, Chairman.
It's, it's refreshing to talk about bridges.
It is, isn't it?
Yes, thank you.
All right, well, good morning, Commissioners. Lindsey Poursou, you're CFO. I do have the pleasure of talking about something that hopefully will be later this year, October, November, when we've lived through all of this craziness. So, the item before you now is requesting your approval of a resolution authorizing work to build or repair certain bridges in the county, and it authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay those costs along with any issuance costs. I want to quickly say thank you to Gilmore &amp; Bell, specifically Joe Norton and Garth Herman, for their work in preparing today's materials, and Joe Norton, of course, is here with us, and we're always grateful to have him here. Certainly, I am, in case there are questions you want to throw our way. So, the resolution establishes the county's right to fund expenditures for certain projects with available cash, and then reimburse those costs with the proceeds of a subsequent bond issue. It also authorizes the sale of bonds to provide permanent financing for those projects. The projects that we're talking about today were included in your 2020 Adopted Capital Improvement Program, and they were programmed to be funded with bond proceeds. We intend to sell those bonds later this year as a part in the 2020 issuance. The resolution would permit reimbursement of expenditures incurred up to 18 months prior to the date of the bond sale or completion of the projects, whichever is first. So, the specific projects to be bonded are included in your backup materials. There are five listed. You'll see that those totals appear greater than the amount we're talking about bonding. That is the total cost of the project. You'll see that the footnotes in your backup materials reference the amounts to be funded with bond proceeds for each project. The debt service for these bonds has been included in all versions of the financial forecast we've prepared since your 2020 recommended budget was included. Now, of course, that forecast will be undergoing some significant revision in the coming months based on what we're experiencing with the COVID-19 situation. But as general obligation debt, which we're talking about today, the bonds would be secured by a pledge of the county's full faith and credit, meaning that bondholders would be able to compel the county to levy taxes in order to pay this debt service. The bond-funded portion of the projects listed on your backup materials total $3.45 million. Based on the timing of this agenda item, we have anticipated that average annual debt service would be around $225,000. Of course, we know with the interest rates dropping, it's likely that number would go lower, of course, also depending on what happens through the course of the year. So, just to be clear, though, your 2020 adopted budget did include a total of $4 million of bonding for roads and bridges. You all have already taken action to authorize the roadwork, R351, which was for intersection improvements at 55th Street and Meridian, so that's why that's not here today, but that's what brings your total to the $4 million you approved. By the end of the year, we may also bring some recommendations for additional bonding for refundings. Our municipal advisor, Baker Tilly, has already been in communication with us about some of the bonds that are eligible for refunding. So, basically, we refinance it, save some money on interest costs, and so, we may have some of that later this year, too. And we'll be working with our partners there and at Gilmore &amp; Bell for that. We're not issuing bonds today, so I don't intend to get into the ratios associated with debt service, but know that we contemplate being well within the boundaries of those five debt policy ratios that you have approved. I can answer questions on those if you'd like. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any other general questions or ask Joe to come up and help us out. If you don't have questions, then I would recommend that you authorize the resolution.
Okay. Yes. David Spears.
Mr. Chairman, David Spears, Director of Public Course. I think it's significant to point out, as Lindsey was saying, on page 25 of the backup, the bridge on hydraulic between 111th and 119th, we were successful, and we applied for and competed for federal funds. So, we're getting $1 million for that bridge, and I just wanted to point that out. It's pretty significant. And just as a little update, any bridge under sufficiency rating 50 should be replaced, and at this time in a county, we have 34 that are like that. 28 of those 34 are programmed in our CIP, six are not yet. This is top priority with us. So, I wanted to point that out. Plus, with strategic planning, our goal is to have an average sufficiency rating of 85, and right now, we are 85.7, so that, that's successful. And I just wanted to point out those factoids to you today.
Thank you. And Dave, so the, and the rating is independent? It's not, do we rate ourselves, or is it...
Well, the rating, we, we have to rate all the bridges every other year to be eligible for federal funding, and there's a set way that you have to do that, that people have to go to schools to learn how to do it. It goes into a computer program through KDOT, and the feds check that. They come down and audit us, so it's, it's nothing that we figure out, it's something that we follow the guidelines.
Okay. And, and just looking at these numbers, just for my own curiosity, or when you do a bridge, are they all in this 850, 700,000 range?
What was the question again?
When I'm looking at these four bridge projects, they're all 850, 700,000. Is that what the range is, is some, less than a million on all those bridges you're talking about?
We've, we've, we've had a bridge before of $7 million by itself, like, over the floodway on hydraulic.
Well, yeah.
And a some range of $50,000.
Okay.
We have 603 bridges, so there's quite a range there.
Is that approximate 603?
That's, well, I better not say, but that's pretty close.
All right. All right, thank you. Okay, anybody, any questions for Lindsey? Being none, anybody from the public like to speak on this item? I don't see any, so bring it back to the bench. Entertained a motion to approve.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item K, Ceremonial Renaming of Rock Road.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chairman, Tom Sulz with County Manager's Office again, and it's a pleasure to stand here and talk about something besides COVID-19. Several weeks ago, months ago, actually, Commissioner Howell contacted Mr. Spears and I with a question about, several questions about Rock Road, but one specifically was a possibility of renaming the portion of Rock Road between the Wichita city limits and the Derby city limits, which is in close proximity to McConnell Air Force Base. Working with all of you, I know all five of you strongly support Veterans and Veterans Affairs, so we decided to put this on the agenda. Mr. Spears priced up the signs. It's for two signs, approximately $400. Tony put his, and our comms department put their magic to the, to the rough draft and has come up with this signed template. So, I'll ask for your consideration today. I think Commissioner Howell might want to speak to more regarding this particular location and sign, but we would ask after questions that you approve the acquisition of these signs, and then we will have some type of ceremonial process in the future to install them and dedicate them.
Okay. Thank you for the, for the presentation, Tom. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And there are some members here in the audience that I'd like to recognize, and I think some of them may want to say a little something here in a moment, but before I even get to that, I have to just recognize that there is a letter that you have on your desk. It comes from our legislative delegation, specifically Senator Mike Peterson, Senator Ty Masterson, Kansas House Representative Blake Carpenter, and Kansas House Representative Jesse Perez. I would also highlight the fact I had a discussion with Derby Mayor Randy White. All five of these individuals have expressed appreciation and support for this agenda item today, so I would like to recognize their, their support for this. I would tell you that I think this community has been very appreciative of our military veterans, those that are serving now and those that have served before now, and even those that are thinking about serving. It's an honorable thing to do. I'd like to recognize retired Air Force Colonel David Dennis, right to my right here, served honorably, and did wonderful things for our country, and he's got some wonderful stories and things he's done. I also am a veteran, served in the Desert Storm era, and so, I have got some great memories and things I could, I'd love to talk about and tell you how, how the Air Force has changed my life. I'm not a retired veteran, but I am a, I'm a veteran. In the audience today, I've got Mike Sainden. By the way, he is a past State Commander of the American Legion, Sons of American Legion, should say SAL, they call it. We also have Joe DiNino. He's a retired Air Force. Thank you for your service, Joe. We have John McCullough, retired Air Force. Thank you, John, for your service to our country. We also have Terry Goen. He's a, he's served in the Marines, but also, he's served in the Navy, so he has two service history, but he also is a retired, retired Navy member. So, I want to say thank you to, to you men for your service to our country. And this started several months ago. Someone had the idea that, you know, we ought to find some way to show appreciation to our veterans. If you, if you drive out by the Air Force Base, which is in my district, proudly in my district, I love it there, but people who travel near the base, if you travel from the north or from the south, we'd like to just say thank you. And that's what started this. And so, there's a portion of road between the city limits of Derby and the city limits of Wichita. Obviously, it's named Rock Road. We're not changing the legal name. If you have an address that's on that stretch, you'll still have mail delivered, but we'd like to use a ceremonial name. You see on the screens there a graphic that thankfully Tony did a great job designing that. The folks that are interested in this have looked at that and are very pleased with the, with the graphic design. But anyway, this is just a way to dedicate a portion of road memorializing that, to say thank you to our veterans and to encourage them to serve. And I appreciate the idea. I think this is a very small thing we can do, and I would just say one thing, we don't have a date for when this would go up. I would like to say, in light of the virus situation that's going on, we'd like to postpone the erection of these signs at such a time that the public gatherings is not an issue. We'd like to have David Spears work with Mr. Sainden to select that date, and then Mr. Sainden will have a responsibility to, to develop the ceremony that we can dedicate these signs and hopefully get some news that highlights the service of our veterans. And so, thank you for both of you to take that role. I would like to turn this over to anybody else that would like to speak, and I'd like to make a motion at the end. So, with that, I will suspend my comments.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. I want to echo Commissioner Howell's comments. We are indebted to our freedoms that we enjoy every single day here in our nation because of the men and women that are wearing the uniform in the past and are wearing the uniform presently. Every time I see a veteran, I make sure I go out of my way to thank them very, very much for their services. You all know that I've been a strong supporter of veterans' causes my whole life. I'm a member of the Veterans Providers Coalition. My chairman's award when I came off the chairman's position recently was to Kansas Honor Flight, which is a great organization. I don't know that anyone that hasn't served in the military understands the sacrifices that men and women go through each and every day. I'll caveat that, because their families certainly know, because in many cases, there are extended separations between the military and their, their families. I want to join Commissioner Howell and all of the Commissioners on the bench in thanking each and every one of our veterans that have served. I can't think of a better place to put this. Commissioner Howell mentioned that I'm a retired Air Force, so putting it outside of an Air Force Base is even better. So, I apologize to my Navy and Marine friends. I had three different joint assignments, so I worked with a lot of different branches of the service, and even though I'm very partial to the people that wear the blue uniform, I, every single one of them do a great job each and every day, and I thank each and every one of them. So, when the time comes, I'd be happy to second this motion. Thank you.
And no other, or Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Just want to thank Commissioner Howell for taking the initiative on this. I saw the letter of support from all the people that represent Derby, had a phone call from Representative Blake Carpenter as well yesterday about COVID-19 and also this, and just wanted to express my support and gratitude. So, thank you, Commissioner Howell, for doing this.
Thank you. Anybody from the public like to speak? Please state your name and address, please. Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Mike Sainden. I'm of the American Legion Post out of Derby. I live at 312 East Tall Tree in Derby, Kansas. I started working with Jim on this a couple days ago, at least, and I've never served. I've never had the honor of the serve. However, I'm a grandson of a veteran, brothers served, and I have a daughter that was injured in Iraq. So, this is very near and dear to my heart. I want to thank you guys for supporting this. This is very, very much a military community, and for all of you who have served, I know that you signed an undotted line to the, a blank check to the US government that says "up to and including my life," and I appreciate that. We will try to set up a nice dedication, which I know we don't get it taken care of, but, but we'd like to postpone it until probably mid-June or even July, when this, this process goes through, and hopefully, we don't get the epidemic the rest of them have had. So, want to thank you for your support of it. It's very, very, very touching to me that when I got the email with the picture of the sign, I couldn't believe how good the artwork was, whoever did it, they did a fantastic job. Thank you. It's, it's going to be a great thing. One last thing. They call me "one more thing" because I always have "one more thing." Commissioner Cruz, when you figure out the new math, please let me know. I go to the, I go to the grocery store, and I haven't figured out this toilet paper math. One roll equals 27. So, I, you know, it's one of those things, it's, it's a...
I don't know that I'm ever going to figure it out, so I'm just going to keep going the way that I know.
Well, it's after you get another one. Anyway, thank you for your time, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you for addressing the commission. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mike Sainden, for those comments. I would like to just highlight, Mike has been a champion for veterans. He says he's never served, but he serves in ways that nobody even knows today. He is our point of contact for all things veterans in our community. I want to say thank you, Mike. You are an amazing person. You're tuned in to so many issues. And by the way, the American Legion, I'm a member, proudly a member. One thing I love about the organization is it's like a family. They know what's going on in the community. It's not just about themselves, it's about everyone. They serve everybody. Even though they served in the military at some points in the past, most of them personally served actively, but like, like Mike said, he has family members that have served. And so, the reality is that service didn't end when they got out. In fact, it's, if anything, it's stepped up. They're doing all kinds of things. I mean, things that nobody will ever know about, the home repairs, visits in the hospital. Reminds me almost like a church. You guys are like a church in some ways. You're, you love each other, and you love the community in ways that people will never know. So thank you for your service personally. Joe, you make some meat spaghetti? Love you for what you do there. These guys are amazing people. It's not just guys, it's also women, men and women, that are just incredible people. I'm proud to be an American, American Legion member. I think this is a great thing. So with that, I'm, I'm proud and pleased to make a motion this morning that we would, that we would, let me say this correctly, we approve the sign for the proposed ceremonial renaming, renaming of South Rock Road.
Second, please. Been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Oh, Madam Clerk, next item. I was getting a little emotional here.
Item L, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on March 12, 2020.
Good morning, Mr. Joe. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on March 12th. We want to present four items to you for your, your approval. Item number one is a bridge replacement on 143rd Street East between Harry and Pawnee for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the bid from Klaver Construction Company Incorporated, and this is in the amount of eight-hundred-twenty thousand, five-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and forty-five cents. Item number two is the 2020 Bond Tech Project for Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Flint Hills Materials LLC, and this is in the amount of one million, five-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. Item number three is the Lake Afton ADA Improvements for Project Services. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from Bauer &amp; Son Construction in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars. And our fourth item, Government Relations and Consulting Services for various departments. This recommendation is to establish contract pricing based on the City of Wichita contract, RQ 840681, and this is with Thorn Run Partners LLC, and this will be through December 31st of this year, 2020. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval of these items.
Thank you, Joe. Is there any questions? Being none, anyone like to address the commission? Nobody from the public? Back to the bench. See no other comment? Entertained a motion to approve?
Move to approve Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz with County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items M through Z, with the exception of R. We didn't have a few technical pieces of analysis to do on that, so requesting approval of all items except that.
I make a motion to approve items M through Z, with the exception of R.
I'll second.
Been a second? Been no comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. So do we, so R is postponed until next week?
Till the next regular meeting.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion on that, or are I? Mr. Papoon?
Yeah, you go ahead and defer if you want to defer to a specific issue. Make a motion, second.
Okay. Make a motion to defer item R till next week, next meeting, I mean, regular meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Motion is second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item?
Legislative Issues.
Mr. Papoon?
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman. We've had a lot happening recently on our, regarding our legislation, legislation this year. First, talk about Senate Bill 406, which is a bill that would establish a charter commission for Sedgwick County, and, in conjunction with our status as an urban county. And then Senate Bill 423, which is a bill that dealt nuisance abatement authority for Sedgwick County. These bills were, we testified in Topeka on these bills, I believe it was March 5th, and I think Commissioner Howell and Chris Labrum both testified on the nuisance abatement bill in front of the Senate Committee on Ethics, Elections, and Local Government. And Commissioner Dennis testified in favor of Senate Bill 406, the charter commission legislation. And I can tell you that as of last night, both of these bills have passed out of the Senate. Senate Bill 406 passed out earlier this week on a thirty-to-eight vote, and Senate Bill 423 last night passed out of the Senate on a thirty-to-seven vote. I just can't overstate how effective our lobbyist, Jason Watkins, was in moving these pieces of legislation through in less than two weeks, considering the fact that really the legislature right now is almost entirely focused on the budget and getting out of Topeka because of the coronavirus issues. So he, really kudos to Jason on getting those bills out, and hopefully if the legislature, legislature continues to convene, we can get some action done in the House. Senate Bill 294 was heard on Monday. There was a hearing on, I believe it was Monday, hearing, yeah, hearing on that, and I know the chairman was going to testify, but instead Commissioner O'Donnell took his place, testified on behalf of the commission. I know Commissioner Howell also testified in favor of this bill. If either one of the commissioners wanted to talk about that hearing, to my knowledge there hasn't been further, further action on that bill as of this time, but I would defer to them. And really, other than that, talking to our lobbyists, really the focus in Topeka right now is the budget bill. Both the Senate and House have each passed a budget, and they're, they're going to be conferencing soon, and then as soon as that's done, my understanding is there are a bug out at Topeka until fruit time, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mike, for the report. Oh, anything else?
No, the Commissioners want to address the Senate Bill 294 hearing.
Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was interesting, some of the comments from both the proponents and the opponents were nearly the same. So, you know, I would, I would argue that some of the concerns are shared by both proponents and opponents, but I, I would tell you there's a lot of momentum on this bill. I talked with a number of legislators while I was there, once again, and I would tell you, if they can pass a policy bill at this point in session, this one's going to pass. If for some reason the budget would pass first, this might be lost, but I'm pretty certain this is important, this is important to both the House and Senate. So I anticipate this bill is going to pass. The only concern, it seems like, that the Senate Committee really heard was the issue of the dates. And I appreciate Lindsey identifying a date, a recommendation change to the bill, I would anticipate they will make that, they will make that adjustment. I don't anticipate anything else being adjusted. Their interpretation is that they're, they're developing someone, I believe, I believe someone in the legislative process is developing, if you will, a template that we're going, we're going to need to follow, that's going to be their format. So I don't know exactly how that's going to work. Might be a rules and reg type thing, but it's going to include things like last year and this year, dollars, and mill levy, and percent change for each jurisdiction that would have, would need to send that notification. So they have all that information on there. I don't know that that would fit the postcard, so how the postcard would work, I don't know. I think this is probably more likely going to be a letter. I don't think they'll make that change. They are, they are, seem to be sympathetic to an opt-in opportunity, so if taxpayers would want to opt in to receive electronic communications, as long as they have the option of opting back out, then we might be able to save some money by offering an opt-in opportunity for our taxpayers. And that would be one way they can help us save money. That we could email in the notification rather than letter mail, as long as they're okay with it, that would save taxpayer money. So that might be something we can do. Other than that, I think that that bill's going to pass. That's all I'm going to say about that. Thank you.
Okay. Been no other comments? Thank you again for your, for your report. Next item, please.
Other?
Under other, I've got, I just wanted to, besides all of the news that's going on, I want to compliment that Commissioner Cruz had an editorial in today's paper, trying to send a message of calmness and unity, and I thought it was really a nice editorial. I'll just introduce that, but Commissioner Cruz, you refer, should I?
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your comments. I actually wanted to read it, to put it in the record. I think it's important that we all kind of take a step back and realize what our role is and how important working together is. So I'm just going to read it, and then I have a couple of comments for our, our students and parents. Now is the time to make a positive movement together, one of solidarity and sacrifice. For generations throughout history, people have been making sacrifices. Today, we are being asked to make ours. If you don't like what's being done, let's talk about that later. Right now, we need to come together for a collective good. Your local government is taking necessary precautions to keep people safe and to avoid overwhelming our healthcare system. Before ruling this out as hoax or panic, I encourage you to read three different news and scientific sources. Expand your current perspective and do some research. We are in a pandemic. Roughly seven thousand people, more than seven thousand people, have died across the world, and a lot more will. For the love of all things human, show compassion, kindness, and understanding. Perhaps reach out to a friend you need to reconnect with via phone. This is a time to come together as Kansans, as Americans. We are lucky to still have time to respond. Take a quick look at Italy. Things will be exponentially worse if we don't make sacrifices now. We are being asked to stay at home with our families. I don't know about you, but if I could, I would reconnect with my family because we desperately need time together. I would practice my guitar that's been neglected for the past two years. These are a few personal things I can think of that would enrich my life. What can you do to enrich yours during this time? How can we find good in this situation? What can we do to reconnect? And those scenarios are for those of us fortunate enough to be in that situation to do so. What about the homeless population, who during every flu season are concerned because they don't have a place to get better? They have to fight their infection on the street. My heart aches for those most affected by this, and I'm doing what I can to take care of those people I am physically and financially able to take care of. How are you making this situation one of solidarity? Where is that American spirit we used to have? That American pride we have as a nation? We must fight this together. The public servants making decisions in this community are working together. They are truly impressive people. Many have spent their entire careers serving the public. They have spent a great deal of time training and preparing for this. Feel confident that your local officials are making emergency decisions, following recommendations, and taking the lead when necessary. The decisions made over the past few days have been in cooperation with a team of highly educated leaders who are informed, capable, and doing their best to take the most responsible action. They're making decisions to ensure the safety and well-being of every person in Sedgwick County. I'll say it again. Now is the time to come together. Now is the time for solidarity and sacrifice. For generations throughout history, people have made sacrifices. Now it's our turn. Thank you for allowing me to read that. And one last little comment, just to our students. My senior, who desperately wants to go to prom, have graduation parties, walk across the stage, expects a fancy diploma emailed to her. She was very upset yesterday, as are a lot of children and parents. Parents are scared they don't know what to do. I would, I would just encourage you to stay calm and understand that we are working to find a solution together. And my daughter has offered up to our neighborhood to do some art projects with those children that might need some creative time. So there are, there are people that are reaching out of their comfort zones, there are people that are doing things. I, I find that we might have a different outlook on things after this. We might be doing things a lot differently. So I would encourage you to look at what, what we could learn from this. And I just want to thank all Commissioners up here for your leadership during this time. I know that you guys have had a ton of questions. I'm sure you're getting them day and night, at all times of the day. So we're doing our best, and I just appreciate the ability to work with us, all of us together in cooperation with one another. We all have the same goal in mind. So thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's probably obvious, but I'd like to just state the obvious because I want to be crystal clear with communication, there's a town hall I had scheduled for tomorrow, and I know it was said earlier, but that town hall is canceled. It'll be, it'll be rescheduled at a later time regarding transportation.